Alright, can we get an approval to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any close? No? Motion passes for zero. Uh, consent agenda?
Um, page nine. Um, under, uh, the election judges. We need to have it say Mr. Craig Stevens, not Mrs.
Not sure what happened there.
Oops. Okay. Good catch, Ben. Uh, anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. Is there anybody for open forum? Uh, okay. Great county shows current minutes.
I have nothing unless you guys have anything to say.
Anyone? Nothing? We're good. Uh, reports for... City council meetings. Who wants to go first?
I will. I attended the city council meeting, fire department meeting, national night out, and Montrose State Celebration.
Anything going in Montrose Days?
Um, we've got a full menu going on here. Uh, Friday, bingo. Um, new year's this year, uh, five o'clock is starting the car show. Um, hoping to change it up and get a little more, a little more involved with that. Um, inflatables starting at 5:30 to 9:30. The Princess and Pirates here at the community center is from six until eight. Um, at 8:30, there's live music outside, music, um, that seventies sunshine band. And then fireworks at ten, Friday night. Saturday, we've got Boy Scouts doing breakfast. Um, over at the Waverly Gun Club, we have a Top Gun shoot. Um, there is a disc golf tournament going on out at the disc golf course. Um, horseshoes here, beanbags here, um... Getting them up to noon. The inflatables will open up. The Girl Scouts are also how, um, doing games. They are going to be, um, fifty cents a game for a ticket. And from what I was told last night, everyone's a winner. Um, still on Saturday, we have, at 12:30, we have, or let's go back here to noon. We have the Kitty Parade, which is starting at City Hall and then ending up here. Um, kids' paddle pole. Go, um, there's games in Lions Park. We have the Go For State Tractors, bingo. Pork chops over here by the fire department, so everyone come up here hungry and eat some pork chops. Great, Kevin?
Thanks for the plug.
Yep. Eight thirty, we have Diamondback. Um, and then Sunday, one o'clock is the parade. Then two till six is the swinging country band. And then K R W C will be over here in Lions Park. And then we will be announcing the winners from beanbags, I mean golf, disc golf, horseshoes, medallion, Top Gun, and softball. So, there's a lot of stuff going on this weekend.
Fireworks?
It's Friday, right? Yes, at ten.
Is council going... You already done, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, boys? Is anybody going to be in the parade?
I could be now.
I will already be in the parade for it, I'll be on the elevator.
Okay, Roy?
What, parade?
Going to the parade?
Depends upon whether it's too sunny and hot out, I can't be on the elevator.
Okay. You're with the chamber? Or with...
With the chamber.
And Jess is going with you too, right? Okay. I'll be in it, yeah. Yeah. Uh, you just got your candy.
I have to get candy.
That's right.
I think I have to get candy for something, yes. So, okay, who's next?
A couple personnel meetings, uh, council meetings, wellhouse meeting, and a zoning meeting.
Right.
Well, council meetings, and I talked to a few different people who are all down here to see if they had any problems or anything, and I've looked at things. I'm pretty satisfied as well.
Okay. Um, I've done council meetings, parking wreck, um, I didn't go plenty of times this month, Montrose Days, and numerous visits at City Hall. Next. Uh, discussion regarding the city council salaries. Um, this is brought up because just numerous discussions on, um, what the city council, where our current salaries are, and Ben has awarded that four years ago? Something like that? Five?
Two years ago.
No. Three, at least, three.
It was three years ago.
Three years ago, um, and we had, Ben had reduced, uh, the council pay. Um, we were currently at that time getting monthly.
Yes, I proposed and we all voted for.
Correct. Correct. Yep, and, uh, at that time, we were getting paid per meeting, and it was changed to a monthly fee. So now, we're looking at, um, possibly changing it still to a monthly fee, not a per meeting, but a flat rate, so budgeting purposes. Um, due to the fact that there's a lot of time spent in this and, um, just kind of getting us an overall study of surrounding cities. So, it's up for discussion. If anybody wants to start, they're free.
I don't remember what we left off at when we went back.
What it is currently?
No, before then, before.
Before, it was twenty-five dollars a meeting. Any meeting over four hours was a hundred dollars. Um...
It was actually fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars a meeting.
Fifty dollars a meeting?
Except for, um, the mayor was eighty dollars for a council meeting.
Council meetings, and then the special meetings were all fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Right. And Ben is correct, at that time, in Chicago, you know, um, there was a lot of meetings going on, and it made sense to do that. Um, and still, there's a lot going on. So, uh, there was a survey actually done by the League of Minnesota Cities for, that they apparently do this every, every year, and just getting surrounding cities, um... It's just up for discussion. If you guys want to increase, stay the same, whatever you want to do.
And just fine, keep where we are. I mean, it's made it very, very easy for budgeting and knowing what the council's going to, you know, going to be on it for the taxpayers.
Understand them. I totally understand what you're saying, Ben. Um, and still, like I said, it would stay at a flat month, right in the budget, and the, these kind of topics come up, and obviously, we sit in top with city staff in regards to this, um, get their input, I mean, because that's how we like to do things, is, you know, get staff involved in this, these decisions. Um, and it was discussed with Wendy. What we could, possible things that we could look at. So, um, at that time, it was discussed, council currently gets a hundred dollars a month. Mayor, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. And it was proposed that it would go to two hundred dollars and two fifty, with a budget of, what did you say, fifteen thousand for the year? That includes any training and conference meetings, so... Any discussion on it?
Well, I think we should do something for all the meetings that a person's got to attend and through what I've been going to. And discussions that we've been having on a lot of things. We've been spending a lot of time on a lot of things. Ben puts in a lot of time into a lot of things, and so do you. On meetings, do stuff.
And I, and I'm telling you, I'm just fine with, with what I'm getting. I don't, I mean, I didn't sign up here to be elected by the citizens to, to take, you know, to double my salary on this thing. I'm fine with a hundred dollars. Do you have anything, Wade?
Well, I'd, I think it should go a level higher, too, so that the people that are thinking about running for an office or a council seat figures about, gee, that'd open, you know, but they would probably get more involved and more enthused if we did raise this. That's the way I feel.
Currently... I... I don't like to have discussions like this, but, um, currently, the meetings that go on, I spend an additional twenty-five, sometimes thirty hours a month at City Hall. Um, which again, is my choice to do that. And there's a lot of things that go, that are going on right now that unfortunately, the council really should be involved in, but... That, that doesn't always happen. And so, when we ask council members to be involved, we always get, uh, we don't have time. We have things, you know, other things going on. So, um, that's kind of why this was brought up. And like I said, it was discussed with staff as well. What there's, you know, getting an input from staff and just doing the surrounding areas, we're actually way under what most cities are.
Of our size, of our location, and...
Correct. But, um, Waverly, Delano, which is higher population than us, Rockford is a little bit higher than us, um, but they're getting, um, a substantial more amount. And again, I'm not in this for, and I don't think any of us are, because... Again, I'm not gonna, um... We're it takes up for discussion, still.
Why can't you go? What does Waverly get?
Waverly currently gets a hundred dollars, council, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, mayor, um, fifty dollars for all council meetings, and twenty-five dollars per each commission meeting that they attend. Again, that could get out of hand, as Ben had brought that up before. You know, um, so, a flat monthly fee is my suggestion, so that staff can budget and they know exactly what it is. And it was, um, discussed with staff to go to two and two fifty.
I feel that's with... Same with me. I mean, I didn't know if it ripped anybody off or anything like that. Got to have a meeting and stuff like that, and going to go and look at things, to discuss things, to see what's happening.
Jill?
Can I say something?
You have to come up to me.
You have to come up and say your name. Happily come on. Jill Larnar, as we all know me, I live today at seven three seven, Seventh Street North. And I guess, I resigned in May from city council. I was seated, actually, I think where Ben is. Um, and in May, I proposed that our summer staff get a fifty cent per hour raise to gentlemen. That's eight dollars per day. Eight dollars times roughly twenty days a month is a hundred and sixty dollars. And that was voted no. Because we couldn't afford it. They didn't ask for it. We couldn't afford it. Why would we give them more? So we won't treat our staff in an appreciative manner, that they're coming back, and as if, I'm not cracking up or wrong, but are they not, at least one of them is now gone, if not both of them gone? Okay.
No, they're all there. We are fully staffed.
Oh, the two summer staff that we hired in May are still here?
We have two new staff.
So new staff? Right, we are fully staffed.
Correct.
But yet, it's okay for you guys to get a raise. You can afford that. So you couldn't afford roughly a hundred and sixty dollars a month?
I was not here at that meeting, Jill.
But, we can't, it, it's just, it's very, it's, I guess that's my only point, is that we couldn't afford fifty cents an hour for some staff to show that we appreciate that they're willing to come back, but we can double our city council salaries.
I understand where you're coming from. I wasn't here at that meeting. And we go on the recommendation of staff.
But it was run up by somebody?
By you or staff. I mean, I don't know, I wasn't here.
Meeting for city council, I certainly did not recommend it.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about this, what your discussion.
That was my discussion all on my own.
I wasn't here for that meeting, so, um, I can't really answer for that. But I, I wouldn't disagree with you, but again, I think that recommendation at the paperwork there, um, was recommended by staff.
It was the state of last year.
Correct.
Are you referring this to the park town people?
Right, the summer hall.
The summer hall.
But you realize that we're already about two to four dollars more an hour than neighboring cities?
Right, and nobody else could get help there either with the prices, but they paid their staff. And it wasn't four dollars an hour, because even them, they didn't even have a wage about them, because they had a wage of nine, nine.
Some cities only pay eight dollars an hour, and some pay ten dollars.
They can't pay eight dollars an hour.
It's other than the rule.
That's below their wage these days. So clearly, it's not, it's not on four dollars less. The maximum it could have been is just two dollars less an hour, based on minimum wage within the state of Minnesota.
And we only felt that that was worth it because we had the same pay as we paid.
Which was the same wages last year. I'm just saying, like, we can't afford to pay our staff, show that we appreciate that they're returning, and training is going to take significantly less, a hundred and sixty dollars a month for two staff members before taxes, but we can double our city councils. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Can I decline to take a raise? Is that legal? So, so if the rest of the council holds its support, and I say I've declined to accept a raise, then?
Yes.
Okay.
You can, yeah, you can.
Okay.
Um, and again, I mean, I totally get where you're coming from, Jill, I honestly do, but you of all people know the time that's put in here. And, um, I personally feel that we could get more out of council if, if there was a... And that's a sad thing, because I spent, the amount of time that I spend at City Hall is, you know, I get, a little help would be appreciated, very much so. And when I talk to council members, unfortunately, I ask you a lot of times, can you help out with this, or this, or this, and it's always no. It's always, uh, I don't have time, I don't, you know, I can't do this.
I mean, I need... Well, that has nothing to do with pay, though, to be honest.
Right!
It has nothing to do with pay. It has nothing to do with our hours.
And, uh, no, it doesn't, Jill, because you haven't been around, but we can have that discussion afterwards, and that's totally fine. So, anyone discussion here?
Yeah, I'd like to see some.
I am.
My name is Tom Marsley, nine oh nine, wide circle. Um, if I understood you, I heard you say that when you ask council members to attend meetings, they claim they don't have time. So is an extra hundred bucks a month going to give you more time?
I'm not saying that it is, but, you know, I'm hoping it gets something. I really do, because when, you know, even when we have an EBA meeting, at one point in time, because we did lose a council member, um, we needed somebody to take in, step into that role. And I asked a council member to do that, and they can't. But they have to attend that meeting, but they can't step into a simple role of running a meeting. You know, and it is not the money issue of it. Um, I don't, and I don't think that everybody realizes, and I mean, there's, I think, three or four people sitting in the audience right now that are considering running for city council, and I, I really hope that you do, and I hope that everybody who does it realizes the commitment it takes. It's not just sitting here once a month. It's really not. It's sitting at City Hall, and all your commission meetings, and your phone calls that come five thirty in the morning, one o'clock in the morning, when you're at work, and, and that's a portion of something that I took on myself to serve the public.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think anybody's arms are being twisted to take a phone call at five thirty in the morning. That's something you do when you decide you want to run for city council.
Correct.
Or you want to run for mayor. You accept that responsibility.
And I do.
Okay? Well, I haven't heard anybody talk about any compromise. It's either a hundred bucks or two hundred bucks, there's nothing in the middle.
Well, that's, that's the discussion. You know, and like I said, I just, um, within staff meetings, this stuff comes up because our budget is coming up. Um, at the end of this month, I believe, the twenty-seventh, I think we have a plan for. Um, and it's just, is this something that we should consider? There was a survey done with the League of Minnesota Cities, so I was then asked to look around for the surrounding cities and see what, you know, everybody else is doing. And to kind of be, we're not looking by any means to be compared, because Rockford is at sixty-four hundred dollars a month, or, I'm sorry, a year. Um, Delano is at seventy-five hundred. We're only looking to increase a small amount. And that, that amount came from a recommendation from staff. That's where the dollar amount came from.
I'll say one thing, I appreciate your benefit, Ben.
Thank you.
So is there any other discussion? Or motion?
Madam, may I have a member of the council? I don't know how far this conversation has gotten, so I didn't want to point out to that the state statute, a increase in your salary has to be done in the form of an ordinance, and wouldn't take effect until after the next municipal election.
Correct. Is there a motion? We're moving on, moving on to the boys. Guys, move, girl with her.
I'll make a motion to go with the two fifty and two hundred per month. I'll second that.
Uh, okay, uh, Lloyd? Ben?
No.
Uh, I will... I will vote aye, Roy?
Aye.
Motion passes three, three one. Kevin?
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, first item on the agenda is the monthly activity report. As you can tell, we have a very busy month, total of twenty-two calls. Uh, nothing too big or anything, too excited for the most part, so. We've been busy doing parades and different, uh, events and stuff out in our community and other communities as well. Um, just a reminder that we do have a pork chop fee coming this Saturday. Tickets are available at City Hall or by contacting a firefighter, and we'll get you tickets for them. And then acknowledgement's on here. Um, I'll skip the first one, because that won't come up. Uh, all the current firefighters, for the high call volume and continued dedication, um, to all firefighters respond twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. We are kind of low in numbers, so it takes a lot more dedication from the group that we do have, um, which has been non-stop phenomenal, actually. Our guys have been really kicking butt on it, so. Um, firefighter Jessica Binkley just completed her firefighter one certification, and she got that. And then Central Minnesota EMS region, um, they provided us three dialable vial doses of naloxone free of charge, so we didn't have to buy some or replace some that had expired, so. Any questions on activity report?
Sounds like it's pretty cool.
Yeah. Um, next item, resignation of firefighter James Casari, effective, that should be July thirteenth, sorry. Um, actually, it should be July tenth, twenty eighteen. So I've been looking for a motion. He served with us for three years and eight months.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second. You said July two?
July.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any close? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, I received word, I haven't yet received the paperwork, unless it's sitting in my mailbox, that we have been awarded a grant from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, which I applied for earlier this year. Um, it's a five thousand dollar grant, it's a fifty-fifty grant, so the city's going to be responsible for twenty-five hundred dollars worth of equipment. Um, we submitted the grant for hose and water moving equipment, so we're going to be buying some new hoses, some new valves, things along those lines to upgrade and keep some extra on hand. So at this point, I would be requesting a motion to purchase over five thousand dollars worth of equipment. I want to spend every last penny, so I'll go with five thousand, hundred, maybe, or whatever I get it loaned to, so. Um, and then we'll be reimbursed after the fact for twenty-five hundred dollars, so...
I'll make a motion for you to spend, um, the money in excess of five thousand dollars so you can get the full matching grant from the Minnesota DNR.
I'll second that.
Uh, Ben?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Roy?
Aye.
I will vote aye, motion passes four to zero.
And then the only other thing on there was what I mentioned in our, um, activity report as well, the acknowledgement of the Central Minnesota Emergency Management Services our region. Um, they supplied us three doses of naloxone. Naloxone is used to counter opioid addiction, opioid overdose, um, so it's a life-saving tool that we're able to carry and keep with us, um, for when we go to overdose type calls, whether they're accidental or intentional. Um, we can get those people out of those, um, deathly incidents with those, so. Um, but they provided us the free doses, free of charge, I just had to run them off with my coworkers, so, thank you to them, so.
Thank you for what you do, Kevin.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Yep.
Matt?
Good evening, mayor and council. If you look in your packet, there is the park recognition meeting minutes from our August sixth meeting. Just a quick synopsis of the softball. Um, like every month, we just talk about regional park funding, trying to get additional funding for that, and any issues that are going on out there with residential complaints and other things like that, public works. Um, we did recently have our summer splash event. Um, we, and you believe you got the invoice for that, you believe it was in your guys' council seat, well, this month. Total cost for that was just under two hundred dollars, and that was just for you taking it. I didn't pick it up and drop it out myself, and a bunch of stuff, but, I think a lot of kids all had a lot of fun, I know. And I might insurance it, so. Otherwise, I believe if anybody wants any photographs or something like that, they are, we leave on the partner page as well as some other places. Um, discuss our next event, it should be part of the park, it should be October sixth. Um, I'm basically spearheading that event. Um, it's going to be a lot, very similar to last year, except for we're going to be issuing dog licenses. Jessica has graciously volunteered some overtime to come out on that Saturday to kind of help with getting dogs licenses. We're not asking a fee anymore, so it's just free charge, just make sure, try and get as many dog licenses as we can. Um, tentatively, we're looking for expenditure of about a hundred dollars for doggy treat bags and just some little trinkets and stuff like that. Um, otherwise, all time will be volunteered. Um, we had a little discussion on the park preserve, um, just looking for if the city gets any information on stuff from the next, submitted from tax law, on what they might be envisioning as part of that park area. I know there's discussion about, um, possibly relinquishing the control from the city of that acreage and putting it back into the associated development with an exchange for actually building a park day one, so at some point before, you know, before all of the developments actually develop, that there's actually a park there already built. Um, so because we just don't want to have it tenured, like before we get around to it. Well, in that location, we feel it's a, it's a good idea to have that kind of run by the association. Um, finance update, nothing, we're still well under budget. It was just some reminders, future events, stuff like that. Um, we just want to also bring up park fees. Um, the city did adopt a, basically just a rental form for the use of certain facilities at parks, as well as using utilities at parks. Um, and we just wanted to set out a clear reminder for the, uh, Montrose Days staff that we know that the forms are filled out, but just asking for either the, basically there should be a check to compensate for the utilities used, or just needs to be approved by council, that if you guys want to waive it, that's what I do. But just want to make sure that it's either one or the other, we're taking care of the form.
When having this discussion, why was no members of Montrose Day Celebration committing, um, the board invited to this meeting if you were going to have this discussion about this, knowing that, um, that you were going to be discussing us at that, at that meeting?
That it wasn't a discussion of Montrose Days, it was a discussion of park fees.
I was just wondering that if the, it, it was just on the agenda to pose the question, if it had been filled out? I had no idea if it had happened, you know?
And, and when it was, it was told that we were not going to be, would, the twenty-five dollar fee was going to be waived for us.
Was that said by city staff?
Yes, it was. And then, uh...
Is that in, so, was that verbal, or is that in an email or something like that?
I will have to confirm on that.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, no representative... And then, um, you know, no representatives of Park and Rec brought this up during our meeting last night. Why is that? They had to come up after the meeting and not make the presentation to the whole board during the meeting.
I can't speak for any other representatives, but I wasn't in town until after the meeting last night, so I could not attend.
I was at the meeting last night that he's referring to, and I waited until afterward. We needed to talk to the board member who filled out the form.
But it's something that...
So it should have been discussed before.
It should have been, it should have been this brought up during the open meeting, or the new business portion of the, of the meeting, and actually it should have been brought up by the representative that was there, not the council liaison.
By which representative? Oh, Sylvia was there. But this is not a new discussion, Ben. You were at...
Yep.
The beginning of the year to discuss park fees. This has been a discussion...
Yes, and at that, and at that time, wider standing on it is that they were not going to be paying the $25, the $25.
I think that discussion was nonprofit churches, that type of thing. And at that time, I mean, I don't know, it's, it's stated on the form, that's all I know, is it's stated on the form. I was asked if, I mean, I, I'm asked if, um, the annual ribbon is filled out forms, and I asked you that. You know, I get these questions from multiple people, so I did...
Why would they come to us and ask these questions?
That's a good question. That's a...
Ask them, tell them to come to us.
That's a very good question, why it isn't brought to you guys, but, so the, the question then was, was do you guys really want to move forward with the fees that are, you know, with the fees? And the three commission members said, we have to, there is a purpose for the fees, and that this is the way it is. Because if electricity is used, then there's a fee, unless they're a nonprofit.
Although the Montrose Day Celebration Board as a whole was very, how do I put this politely? Very disappointed in the presentation of this to us.
But, but this is, you mean last night?
As, as a whole, from beginning to end of this discussion here. I do have a check for them from the Montrose Day Celebration Committee, but it was, uh, it has been discussed amongst us and very disappointed in the way that this was held. And actually, I lost some respect for you guys in the way that you conduct yourselves for it, so, that's what I have to say.
Do you want me to say something or not? I mean, you're the park commission. I, I do have to say that this was a very, very, the council can still waive, but Ben, this, you made the motion back in January to approve this.
And when we discussed it, it was under my understanding that this was going to be, Montrose Day Celebration is not going to be paying this fee.
And, you know, I mean, wherever the miscommunication was, whether it was on the park or the commission, whether it was on the city council, whichever it was...
Here's the check for, right, for, so we can have electricity up here for the celebration this weekend.
Do you have any?
No, it's just, uh, I guess I'm sorry, you felt that way? I mean, it's just something that was brought to our attention this last month, and if personally it wasn't brought to our attention, I probably would have said, people were just asking that, you know, would they fall under this category of requiring to pay the fee unless they have council approval to waive? And it was just a yes or a question, the answer was yes, and I do apologize that this wasn't possibly brought to our attention, so we could bring it to your attention much sooner.
How does council feel about this?
Well, I don't know, but I thought we decided this off quite some time.
We did. The park fees were a part of the discussion back in January, and that's when the approval came through, but as stated on the forms, each form, in regards to nonprofit churches, whichever, they're exempt. Unless a member of Montrose Days were to come to us and say, can you waive the fee? Then it's up to council that we can waive the fee or choose not to waive. So, um, do you guys have...
I don't see anything about that.
With what?
If they want to come on a motion to pass.
Well, they're not going to come in a motion in four days. The council meeting is here today, so, um...
And we're not on the agenda, and it was not added to the agenda, so it can't, it's moot point.
Can't we put another in the park rec discussion?
You kind of mentioned the agenda, I need to add.
Well, I mean, because, I mean, it is our discussion right now, since it's in their minutes, I mean, is that okay?
If you could, you're running a week, so if you consider that to be encompassed in the park board minutes, you can certainly discuss it during this agenda item, and if not, you can amend the agenda to add another item at any time.
Okay. So I, I think since we're having the discussion, and I'm glad that Ben did bring it up, um, but again, Ben, it was highly discussed, and I guess you could be a representative of the Montrose Days Board, um, I don't, the discussion at Park and Rec, they were very adamant on the charge due to the electricity, but I see it as, this is an event for the community as well, so, um, I'm perfectly fine with waiving the fees. So I will make a motion then to waive the fee for the Montrose Days Committee, um, so that they can put on this event for our residents and this in the city, so. That was, I made a motion to waive the fees, yes. Uh...
I have to state something.
Roy?
I can't see what all the vigor is about everything. That's what's so aggravating with some of this stuff and everything. It seems like nobody can get along with nothing to sit around and discuss anything. And setting vigor about something, working with everybody, and maybe we can have something going in this town.
So is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
You're going to waive the fee? Yes? Okay. Lloyd? I would vote aye as well, three, to, three oh one, to waive the fee for the Montrose Days Committee for putting on the event for our residents. Good?
Yeah, I, I'm just more of a stickler for paperwork, and if it's done, I guess that's, we'll see what happens, as long as council feels okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or certain frustrations?
You're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Planning and zoning. Deb?
David, planning and zoning meeting from Wednesday, July 18th. We started out by giving the oath of office to a new planning and zoning commission member, Mr. Wright Scallon. Happy to have him on board, he has experience from the city of Dassel with this. The, at that meeting, they talked about the officers that they decided to leave. Ms. Henry is the chair, and they made Mr. Ryan Berger the vice chair, in the event that Ms. Henry would be available. One of the members asked me to bring up discussion on the frequency of the meetings and also the time for the meetings, and that member did start by making a motion to change the meetings to 6:00 PM, but the motion did fail, and they decided to keep them monthly and at 7:00 o'clock. And the reason why they did that, and I completely understand, is there's some people in the commission that do not get in time, in time to have a meeting until 7:00 o'clock. We did bring up park dedication fees, that was also a request from one of the members, and our city planner Mark Holtes is looking into that because our ordinance is older when it comes to that, and we do need to make some changes. And council member Johnson did bring some information from another city for us, and so Mark took that and is looking at that, and then he, we are going to have a meeting this month because he's still putting information together, and then he'll present that at the September meeting regarding park dedication fees. And we are looking at that to keep it in compliance with state statute. Some future planning and zoning topics, Mark gave an overview of some things that we have going on in town. There's some businesses that have approached the city, and he is working with them on a regular basis, trying to help them identify a space or land to build something. Unfortunately, most of them want an existing building, and there's not a whole lot to offer here when it comes to that. But he continues to work with them. And then we also asked them, the Park Planning and Zoning Commission to, I'm going to be getting each of them a book with the subdivision and zoning ordinance, and not everybody has a copy of that, and also our city comprehensive plan 2040. And they're going to be given a list to record things that they'd like to see changed in the ordinance, and then to prioritize that list, and then Mark, and I will start working on that. And then, um, the last thing is, there was concern about a variance that was due for the building on 111 Buffalo Avenue South. Mark did look into that, the variance does expire in September. After looking into it and looking at our ordinance, he is able to grant them an extension, and then it's going to be brought back to the planning commission in September, and then eventually to the city council. Um, the issue with that building was he wanted to move that building, but when he got into the building, it probably won't make them move. So he wants to build the exact same building, so Mark didn't see a problem with giving him the extension, because it's the exact same building, or new material will be moved. So that will be coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, um, city council meeting in the future. Any questions for me?
No, thank you. Okay. Wayne?
Public Works had a request from a resident to put a couple of stop signs on Crystal Wayne and Mindy with the Understep. When I talked to you, Michelle, we said that you've tried one before.
They have, um, it's, it's been addressed on social media, because I believe that's a bus stop, isn't it here? No. Okay. Um, what if, what is your thoughts on that?
I'd like to try some slow children and play, I mean, you put a bus stop sign on.
Okay.
You can put stop signs all over, and you're still getting hurt a lot.
Right. I mean, I actually just talked a little bit about this to a person that lives over on Midley Lane, and that stop sign that is currently there, it's kind of like a racetrack, you know, and if you put a stop sign at every block, people are just jumping it, and, you know, um, sometimes it makes it even more unsafe than originally. So can you get the signs ordered then? Start it that way? Slow children at play, a bus stop sign, because that is a bus, major bus stop, so.
We can do that.
Okay. We don't need a motion for that, do we?
I don't believe so. I think that's just...
Just, just, okay. Okay? We're good, thank you. Um, administration?
First thing is employee job descriptions. With the opening of the city clerk treasurer position, the personnel committee met, they decided to evaluate all the job descriptions for the employees in the city. And while doing that, they did find a lot of things that needed to be changed. Nothing major, just minor things. So with the direction of the personnel committee, the administrative staff reviewed the job descriptions for their department, and minor changes were made to each of them. Uh, the proposed changes were then presented to the personnel committee at their July 6th meeting, and they were okay with them. Then the employees of the Public Works Department were given a draft copy of their amended job description at their July 30th performance, quarterly performance review. And Mr. McCormick did not hear any comments, he did not receive any comments from any of the employees about the changes. Just to give you an idea of what some of the changes were, the chain of command was one of them, in all the Public Works Department's employees, we changed it that the chain of command, instead of going to city council, that they come directly to Wayne if they have a question. If that doesn't work, then they would come to me, and then they would go to city council after that. So it was minor things like that. For the city clerk position, as you know, it's a, it's a permanent part-time position, so we changed it to say up to 40 hours. It's no longer a salary position, it's an hourly position. So that was the change in that one. And then some of the other changes for like the deputy clerk and for justices, the administrative assistant for Public Works Department, those changes were made because they looked at the duties and responsibilities, and there were some changes in those. Some of those have been going to other departments. So you were given a copy of all of them, and if you have any questions over myself or Wayne, please ask, and if not, we just need a motion to approve them, the new job descriptions. The amended, I shouldn't say new, the amended job descriptions.
I'll make a motion to approve, and we've got prescriptions for everything for all our employees that we've got in our office at our work.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ben?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Roy?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Next thing is the memorandum of understanding. The city council appointed me at the July 9th meeting to be the permanent part-time city clerk treasurer. Thank you, I'm very excited about that, I'm loving the job. With that, there had to be a determination on wage and benefits, and so at the special city council meeting held on July 16th, I did present the city council with a memo. Um, they did ask me to leave the room, they did discuss and consider the wage and benefits as outlined in the memo, and they did, after discussion, they brought me back in, and they did approve the wage and benefits, and after that, the city attorney, Mr. Matt Broko, was contacted, and he prepared the memorandum of understanding that's before you, and it details those items that you discussed. So if you have any questions, otherwise we just need a motion to approve that.
Is there any discussion?
Was, was had approved by the, the union. Both for Wayne and Lloyd.
It's in line with the union contract. Yep. So I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for Deb's, the hiring of Deb.
I'll second that.
All right, Roy?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
All business is resolution 2018-21, the resolution amending the mayoral appointments for the year of 2018.
So at the July 9th city council meeting, we reviewed the, the resolution that was passed earlier in the year, resolution number 2018-03, which would approve the mayoral appointments for 2018. The reason we had to prove it is we did have the resignation of a city council member, and after our city attorney, Mr. Broko, looked at it, he had some recommendations. We had a lot of specific names in there, and he asked us to go to common names, like where it said the city clerk treasurer, instead of putting my name and former city clerk's name, he would just put city clerk treasurer. So you have your new resolution, I prepared it before you, and you'll see where there's a lot of common names that have been replaced, and then we did have to put obviously specific council members' names for the, when they're a liaison in a certain committee or commission. And then I did want to point out to you that there were some other changes made in regards to, like the deposit, the official depositories, there, there was a whole list, and they're no longer people that we've used for many years. So I looked at that with the deputy clerk. And then, um, just some minor changes to the city meetings because there was wrong information on there as well. So, um, frequency of meeting and times have changed on that, but nothing drastic. So if you have any questions, otherwise we just need a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution number 2018-21, resolution amending the mayoral appointments for the year of 2018.
I'll second that.
All right, I'll vote aye. Roy?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
And Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
New business, discussion to upgrade the video equipment at city, for the city council meetings.
Okay, um, Mayor Otto has guests to discuss this.
Go ahead. Okay. Um, it has been discussed for quite some time that the equipment we have is difficult to work with. A lot of times we can't get things to upload, Wendy can't get stuff to come up on the system, and then when they transfer everything over to city hall to get it uploaded for our website, it sometimes takes the whole day into the next day. Just as it is getting a little better by... Jess, as it is getting a little better, but why do you know we'll lose our stuff? 10 years at least? So, if we have staff take a look at getting quotes on different equipment to upgrade that, to make things a lot easier and accessible to them? Is that something you would do, or Jess? Look at what you guys would feel would be better? We'd all probably do it together. Or you can get Wayne involved, because he's pretty knowledgeable. Wayne is the one who actually had to deal with uploading, and a lot of times too, when, you know, we have people that come and want a copy of just a meeting or something, you know, it would take a day or two to even upload it, so...
Didn't we talk about changing some changes here a few years back?
We did.
Was gonna cost you about $10,000 a year, right?
Yeah, I can't remember exactly. That was recording equipment, I think, like the CD player or something, and we never did change that, but I don't know if we've talked about the camera.
Because like now, you gotta have that way back there, because of the speakers back there, but yet when you get a tape, you can't hardly hear anybody talking.
Yeah, it's not the best system, but we could...
I wonder if that paperwork might still be in the office someplace, but it was before I got...
It'd be outdated though, so far outdated for, I mean, yes, you could use it for reference, but...
Yeah, maybe we had this system then, and that was fairly new, so what does that make our system? If that's the one I'm talking about is outdated now, what about this system?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's outdated.
So, and you know, a lot of cities unfortunately have the, or they're lucky enough to have, you know, like Comcast and Turner that can, that does all their stuff, and we don't have that, so... So will you just go ahead and give the direction for staff, and then to maybe come back next month and give us a few ideas, few quotes?
Absolutely.
Any upcoming meetings?
As I said, the planning and zoning is canceled. We're going to, you did approve to have a budget workshop at 3:00 on Monday, August 27th, and then the next Park and Recreation Commission meeting is September 3rd, 23.
Fourth Thursday, Labor Day.
The fourth, oh, thank you. Okay, so September 4th.
That's right. Okay. Acknowledgements? I'm gonna go ahead and acknowledge the fire department for all the work that they did with us for the summer splash, and it's greatly appreciated. Again, Paula Thompson, because she continues to go out and take care of all of our greenery on Highway 12. Paula?
Doesn't it be somebody else that's doing it?
Nice. Okay. Well, whoever is out there cleaning up, then we thank you for doing that. And then, I want to acknowledge the staff too, because there's a lot of things going on right now. We got staff that works really hard for everything that we have going on in the city, and I do want to acknowledge all the hard work that they did for us. Thank you. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll say it, I'm on paper.
Aye, aye.
Any quotes? All right. So this is...